I'll call the January twenty first, twenty twenty one meeting with Mayor and Council. I'd like to ask him here, or leave this in prayer and then we can say anything.
All right. The President of the City of New York, in the fourth floor of us, in this, yes, continue to be listening to be listening, being listening to things, especially if I'm the only one who can back to the door, all of you, obviously, probably should have, but they're very good at the money. You ask all of us, we should say?
One nation, united, unified, united in that state somewhere, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you have the minutes, you have the minutes for the January seventh meeting before you. Are there any additions that you'd like to make at this time? Here none, it's approved by confirmation. We move on to item three, total funding request. I have any consideration of a request to approve street selections for the Georgia Department of Transportation, local maintenance improvement, rent, or help make for Anna. That's exciting for us.
Good evening. As you are aware, every year normally we have this list and we select it by the end of the calendar year, December thirty first. This year, due to COVID pandemic, it was delayed to February first. There was a list of runways that was sent out to each of you. I was hoping you had a chance to review them. As you recall, that is actually a year, a year ago, in February of twenty nineteen, we contracted with IMS to go out and rank all our streets and physically examine them. So this will be the first year that we use. The ones that are on the list are the ones that are recommended at the top of that report. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the street segments identified in the list and shown on the map for the central to G dot, the twenty one, twenty twenty one, our resurfacing program. It's a little over five point one two miles.
Counsel, any questions for that? None? This is exciting. I'll take, take a question. Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. President, for approval of this decision.
Thank you.
All in favor, show your hands.
Yes, thank you, Counsel.
Item B, consideration of request to approve proposal phase one of the Mud Creek Sewer System for the purchase, installation, and monitoring of the sanitary sewer flow monitoring system. Daryl Muse, again, sorry.
All right, thank you, Counsel, and Mayor. Again, this is part of our continuing effort to harden the wastewater collection system. As you know, during significant rainfalls, we get a lot of stormwater infiltration into the system. To date, we've been out there and repairing a lot of fractures and broken pipes that we have found as a result of TV analysis. This is a more sophisticated and more pointed system that allows us to put flow meters inside the actual sewer pipes, so that when we get rain events, we can actually see the water increasing, and we can pinpoint where those flows are coming from. We're going to start in the Mud Creek, we're proposing to start in the Mud Creek basin. It is smaller, about half the size of the Wippecucci Sewer Collection Basin. This is part of our requirement by EPB. They wanted us to get a comprehensive review of our sewer collection system and identify where these flows are coming from. Phase one, the equipment itself is about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, one thirteen ninety-two to be exact, for the purchase of that equipment. Rain gauges, an additional software, eighty-six thousand, three forty-eight, and the contractor that we have sought to form this workforce, Barge Engineering, is twelve thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Bringing the phase one total to two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. In the data here, we did solicit quotes from three, ADS Environmental Services, CSL, and HAWK. And ADS was the load provider at two twelve, five sixty-four. HAWK was the next load. They were two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So we're requesting, we're requesting permission to proceed with this purchase.
Counsel, any questions for Daryl Muse?
Tell us a little bit how this is going for you. Mud Creek, you take me on east side of town, and those, basically, the code right there?
Yes, so basically southeast side of town.
And so we, we got, what, can't, how many miles is, how many, one, that, y'all, two?
Well, we have about four hundred and fifty miles total sewer pipe, about two hundred miles of one ninety-five, I believe, or one ninety-six goes to the Mud Creek facility, the other two hundred plus miles of pipe goes to Wippecucci. And also, Mud Creek takes on most of our industrial, most of our industrial sites over to the Mud Creek facility.
Probably the market would be far, you do mention already, except, yeah, it's areas, just how that work there?
Yes, sir. Part of the, part of the program requires us to have a hydraulic model, and you approved that a few weeks ago. So we're working with this hydraulic model, just basically some first, this embedded GIS software that identifies where all the pipes are, all the sizes of all the pipes, so the computer knows how much flow those pipes can take in. So we started to put flow monitors actually inside the pipes. We're going to get fifteen of those additionally.
Fifteen scattered.
Fifteen all over the city, and we'll be able to move those as well. But we need to do this in the months of, between January and April, that's when we historically get our significant rainfalls, so we can monitor the performance of the system after we get from these down cores, you know, getting spring and early spring. So those will be fifteen places, and then we'll move those around as the model tells us that during a two inch rain event, we have an extra million gallons down this trunk line. So we'll start to move those that had less impact. We'll move that equipment to, to this other area so we can pinpoint exactly where those flows are coming from. Then we can go in and do full point repairs and find exactly what it is and fix the worst ones first.
So the number ten, well, the number eight, you got, probably, probably got a demo try, where, where, where they come in, other than, you know, you know, running through.
Yeah, maybe, you know, just, just lifting up a mantle.
All of this is going to play into our SCADA system as well, you know. That SCADA system, you're going to get a peek at that during the, during the presentations in, in February, in March, in March. So you get a peek at that SCADA system and see how powerful that is, and, and I'll be able to demonstrate, you know, what we see is some of the intelligence that we get from that SCADA system. But all of that information pours into, into that system, into the SCADA system, into the GIS system, and into this hydraulic model to allow us to make these predictions and predictions on where this is coming from. One other important part of this hydraulic model is if a large development decides to come to town, we can plug in their flows, their anticipated flows, if they, four hundred home subdivision, we can plot them on the map, computer with map, and say, you know, you can't handle that many hours, or you need to upgrade your system here, 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 to accommodate that. So we can work with the developers to make sure that their project, you know, works very well with our collection system.
You know, I think really great news, because a lot of the complaints that I've heard over the years regarding our sewer spills has been that we allow growth to occur without really making sure the system could handle it, and therefore lift the problems. That is cool.
We need, we need another Smart Cities Award for that.
This system also has some, has some artificial intelligence. So once it gets this data and starts to collect more and more and more of this data, it could start to make better decisions on performance. For example, you know, the thing that happened on Mildred a few weeks ago, a pump station was pumping, the elevation was wrong, well, was it wrong? It was, it was borderline. So the computer system, if we had all of this data, could have told that pump, pump station, I want you to slow down to let this other system get in, so it doesn't overflow. And when that one starts to come down, it'll turn that pump station back on to, to allow it to, to catch them. So, no, we're getting there.
One thing I, you know, Counsel, I, it do be, be the glory, because it be a story. I got a high, a high bill, and I, I thought, I thought, there, he could go in, and, yeah, he, he, he tell you all the way down, how it's water, you use it, clear by him on the pool, cause he won't let you come here, he got a leak. I had, he never made all the leaks because some of them, the house low itself under the house, but it'll tell you when you, when you lose the water, have you, you know.
Yeah, you still have about one point one gallon an hour leak.
Yeah. I'm a way to say that. It's on the, it's on the old house, and you gotta tell the kitchen, go in, you carry, you get on the, so.
Yeah.
They, they, I keep the laundry in, I sit here, and I look at that.
Any other questions for Daryl? Counsel, I'll offer approval of the proposal submitted by Barge Design Solutions in the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and sixty-four well spent dollars.
Mr. President, would you approve the request presented by the students?
Second, sir.
Second, all in favor, show your hand. Thank you, Counsel. Item four, ordinances and resolutions, consideration of a request from the Council on the Kentucky Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing myself to sign a grant application from the Federal Aviation Administration for small community air service development. This again is very exciting for a couple of reasons. One, it would be an additional carrier at our airport. Two, it's only thirteen million dollars, I believe they offered nationwide, they're going after a million bucks with it so far.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, Counsel. American Airlines is interested in the lake from Valdez to Charlotte, North Carolina, which is their hub. So there's some, there's thirteen million dollars available nationwide for these kind of expansions, as, as Mayor Matheson said. The, the project cost, the estimated project cost for us to do this, if we, if the airport wants to engage with American Airlines, is a million, two forty-six, nine thirty-three. That'll be the total cost of marketing, getting the hub ready, the, the counter ready, that type of thing is what this million two would be spent. The grant requires a ten percent local match, so that match would be a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars. Now, if you remember, in, on past airport grants, it's usually an eighty percent federal funding, the state chips in fifteen percent, and there's a local five percent match. That is not the case with this. As I said, this is a little bit different as normal. I'm, we're bringing it before you, because as you know, we have, we administer all the grants for the, the airport authority. So it's a little bit different as the, with that hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar match, it can be from the airport's local funds. It has to be from in kind type of services with this grant. So what, what the airport authority has done, and I think it is, is the same thing as providing cash, is that for the first year, they would waive the terminal rental and the landing fees, and that should accumulate to about a hundred and one thousand, a hundred and two thousand dollars. The remaining will come from different organizations in the community, such as the Chamber, and some other clubs have already submitted others to support to, to reach that, to make that gap. So a little bit different funding level, because it's a little bit different project. So once again, we have to get you guys approved, have Mayor Matheson sign this, so we can get the process started for the airport authority. We have to answer any questions you may add.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You say the match is coming from in kind from the airport and?
Yes, ma'am.
Business?
Yes, ma'am, just like with any other grant.
They're committed to pay it to the city, have to pay it.
No, ma'am, just like with any other FAA grant, the city never has to chip in any money. We're just the administrator for, it's, it's usually the FAA, Alex had the eighty percent, the state at fifteen, and the airport itself at five. This is different. So if the, if there's no state chip in for them, it's ten percent in kind match by the airport authority. But it cannot be a cash, it's got to be, if they, this one wants in kind. So they will waive those fees, as I said, for a year, which will get us almost there, but not quite. And then other, other organizations, such as the Chamber, other corporations, the corporate world, will chip in to make that gap. So no, the city has no money in this law.
I know, I see, and I finally, I just wasn't, wish to put that document, because they said, I was reading that, resolution, it said they intended to. I thought I read somewhere that said they intended. Wasn't said that they had committed to doing that? And I'm thinking, how is the city going to get involved financially, because I know we don't have the money?
Yeah, that, that language in the resolution comes from the FAA themselves, Councilwoman Toohey. So, I mean, we can always look at, if that word intentions in there intended, that does seem to present a problem for you, but it does come from the FAA.
Counsel, just to clarify, they, they've asked people like me for any kind of marketing dollars. In fact, if I can make twenty thousand dollars in marketing to announce their arrival, then that counts for that bill.
When you said now, are we talking about the American?
Yep, American.
Marketing, the marketing side of it.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
When I was just looking at, when they said this is a small community grant?
CSDA, I think is what they call it, Small Community Grant, yes.
And the reason I asked that, I think the name, you know, A, class program, and we were trying to give money grants. They said, oh, this is not considered a small community. We could not get it, because we was a little twenty thousand, number twenty thousand, number of people. And that is considered a small community, because if you are a vote that, you are not considered a small community. So how can I ask for a grant for a small community, and we are not considered a small community?
Fantastic question. There's so many grants out there, Councilwoman Toohey, everyone has their own stipulations. But us, let's say, for example, USDA grants, great grants, great programs, but they consider us too large of the community to participate in, in those type of things. So it just depends on what that grant and that organization requires and sets as a small or large city. It's, it's not a one size fits all in the grants world.
It's not?
It is not, I promise.
No, that's what I'm saying, because, from my, my, my teeth is.
Like I said, I would love to participate in some of the USDA programs they have, but we have outgrown that. And I always say that a lot, but us is kind of too small for some, some grants, and to, we're kind of in that middle ground a lot of times. And I think you've heard me say that before, but we find ourselves in that middle ground. But of course, we don't want to get smaller, we do want to get larger. But, yeah, it's not a one size fit all. So for their program and this program, we're considered a small community.
Tell, tell us what, what that authority has to do for it, for, for America, and I'm different from what we already have.
Well, obviously, it'll give us another leg of transportation, a mode of transportation to the Charlotte, North Carolina area. Yeah, part of, and what part of this, this grant will be for is to get the lobby area set up, like, you know, when you go to check in, get all that type of infrastructure in. The majority of it is for marketing and advertising to get folks there. But they do have to have some improvements inside the terminal itself, so you can check in and things of that nature. As far as the runways go, my understanding is there's nothing that has to be done anyway with, with the runways. You know, and part of this project cost is what they call a minimum revenue guarantee. And that's about nine hundred thousand dollars. So American Airlines doesn't bring in, I think it's like nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, they will make sure the airport authority gets nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So that's part of that million two I'm talking about. So it's just a win-win for our community and for the airport authority as well.
How, how would, how would that affect Delta, that company, and, and, because now America, and we're coming going back to Charlotte?
Charlotte, that's exactly right. So it won't affect the Delta. You know, when you get new things coming in and you get other competition in areas, sometimes it's very productive for that to happen.
Counsel, Jim Galloway, our airport authority director out there, got to go to a showcase and actually try and rule about four different carriers to even from the Doc Delta into doing a, a Orlando Hawk, come on into town from Atlanta, then do a Atlanta Hawk back again. So they're, they're working real hard, and they have some, have some runway rehabilitation that's going to be going on. The Service for America wouldn't start until the, the year twenty twenty-two, January.
Oh, we're trying to get, you know, get some in, who get there, over the years.
I mean, I, because we have, and I talked with him, he was trying to get, we were trying to get some competition for there.
That's right. That's what I said, competition always brings productivity.
Yeah, I'm kind of like, what, what do you mean by this, like this?
Yep. Any further questions?
Let me see, I have one. Okay, now, one other thing, we're listening to you. Now, also, just want to know, in my understanding, this is kind of getting started on the airline, all right? So the purpose of this, I guess you could say, the grant is for American Airlines to kind of start building and bring an airline here?
It's for the airport to do what is necessary to get another airline into the terminal. It, it is, it's to reimburse, if you will, the airport for whatever cost they may incur to get American Airlines here.
Yeah, because I remember, we were trying to see what could it take for us to get our air, our airport out. We got one of the, we got one of the largest airlines. We got another way to move some kind of, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
So we should have hired an airline. And I feel, I knew what they were saying, how Delta's like, but I, they said that there was really not too much more they could do to that.
That's correct, right. And it, and it.
To attract another airline. So this is, so, right?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And, and really, one point, too, I mean, I, I know it is a lot of money, but for what we're getting for the value, as I said, approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that is a revenue minimum guarantee. So the other remainder would be for the things they need to get done to get, you know, the terminal situated for another airline. So the nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars is guaranteed income that we're going to get from this grant if they don't reach it themselves.
And the city doesn't have it anywhere.
Once again, we never do, and have this, this same requirement, yes, ma'am.
Let it follow through.
Then it won't get done, and American Airlines will not be here. We'll be with Delta as we have been throughout the years.
Do we have any, do we? Do we, do we have a, a target date?
Right. It, it's twenty twenty-two, but like I said, because there's only thirteen million dollars. We're not guaranteed we're getting this. We're just trying to get our name in the pot, to get some of this thirteen million dollars. So they're fairly confident we won't see anything begin out there till twenty twenty-two, and well into twenty twenty-two.
And according to the report, we won't know anything until, at the earliest July.
That's absolutely correct. So we're, we're nationwide trying to get thirteen, a little bit of the thirteen million dollar pot.
Let's see, let's see.
Yeah, and it'll just be from here to Charlotte, Charlotte, Matt, yes, sir.
It don't look right. So what you're saying, we apply to get them?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. We're applying on behalf of the airport, because we agreed to administer, we're the fiduciary body for the, the airport authorities, so we have to apply for these funds.
So you need to ask to make your motion.
Correct. To apply throughout the, I can't, Matt, and sign this resolution, and.
So move.
I'm going to ask a question to you.
Okay.
Y'all say this resolution was information that was sent from the federal, or ADA. This resolution, how you give it to, the, from a federal resolution?
As I understand, we get all of our information from Jim Galloway, and I'll be happy to follow up with that.
City.
City.
It's a city resolution, but we, Jim Galloway and Theresa work the language. The language comes through FAA, because they need, they, they can't proceed unless we have this resolution in the form.
I understand. I just looked at it, and looking at all of it, and it is.
Well, that's because part of it, Councilwoman Toohey, is the fact that, as I told you, the funding structure is much different than a normal FAA grant would look like. That there's not the same structure to it.
And I, it, it, I mean, you, okay, one other question?
Sure.
Does that, I heard you that I was, just before they, uh.
He gets the book just like you guys, you get it?
You look that here?
Mr. Mayor, there's a question before and a second. Counsel, all in favor, show your hands. Six in the room, all in opposition. One in opposition. What's the carries? Item five, citizens to be heard. Mark Harper will step back up and read the letter that, that is before us.
Okay, place before your bench today is a, a letter from Victoria Funch. I will read the whole letter to you, as you have that in front of you, to respond to. But it is, in regards to vaping stores. You know, last year we did a moratorium on liquor stores and vaping. Vaping, we were going to follow the lead of the, the state of Georgia. But when, when the coronavirus hit, you know, legislature was in and out, and they never really came down to any final agreement about vaping shops and things of that nature. So we're still in that moratorium for both vaping and, and liquor stores. And how we, how you guys approve that was that until you decide you'd like to lift those moratoriums, they will remain in effect. So this is, I think she's wanting to open a new vaping store or something.
Where, where you want?
I'm not sure she said, Mia, did she, Theresa?
Does she have a store already here?
I don't think she does. This is, she doesn't have one here. Yeah, she, yeah, she doesn't have one here.
And you don't, but just still, vaping does all this here.
The, the, right. But you guys put a moratorium on new, you know, added to the inventory of vaping facilities last year. And we'll be bringing that back forth, but like I said, it's really been, not been an issue at this point in time. And you were wise enough to, you know, do the moratorium until you guys decide we need to bring it back for the moratorium.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, citizen. Item six, we'll bring Mark back up with the city managers' report.
Okay, just a few items this evening. We're going to have, we can talk about this a little bit. I really want to do more in detail at retreat, but we don't, we really don't want to wait until March to begin this. But as we talked about last time, you know, we have our big neighborhood cleanups a couple of times a year. I talked about one, I think last week I said district two, but it was district three. So we want to do some smaller type of cleanups and just kind of confine it more. And so, and how we decide upon this is we have our marshals out, Theresa Turner's out, Richards out, and public works guys, and little areas that just seem to need some attention and not wait till we have our big event. We want to go ahead and start addressing those. So on January the, the twenty-fifth, we will have one of our first smaller area cleanups. And it's going to be from, it's going to be January twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth, and it's going to be between North Forest Street, Leon Street, and Sycamore Street on Hills, that little, that little area right in there. The marshals and others have identified that as a, more of an immediate lead than, like I said, waiting for the, the bigger cleanup. So we'll, the marshals, as they always do, will get out early in the neighborhood. They'll be putting door hangers to folks to know, hey, bring all your stuff, we're going to be here, we're going to have our public works vehicles. And like I said, and we had a, a great turnout at district three. So that's what this is about. That'll be our first experiment of that on the, on the twenty-fifth, through the twenty-ninth.
Then we say.
It's, it's the all week, we're doing the whole week, like we did in district three, instead of one day. And we just found, we did district three, it worked better to do the whole week instead of one day for folks to bring things out. So it will be, like I said, marshals do a great job. They get out and they put a door hanger on every home there to let folks know about it. Then we also, coming February the first, we have our love downtown campaign, and that's, the ministry will kick off the month of, of that. And there's a promotion that'll start on the, February the first, end on the twenty-eighth. And it's where they get, they try to get citizens to visit the downtown shops and restaurants. For every twenty-five dollars spent, the citizens will be entered into a drawing of two hundred dollars in downtown, a very popular event over the years. So that, that's beginning. We talked a little bit, and Dr. Gro and Courtney Shealy did a great job the other day talking about the vaccinations. And the, they, the problem right now is, they've got more appointments than they do vaccine. So, you know, while they have the vaccine, they can get a good number of, that they think they're going to get as far as the vaccine, they'll open the portal back up for appointments. But as we speak, the appointment portal is closed because they just do not have the vaccine to give a shot. So Courtney invited myself and the mayor out, I believe, Tuesday for a tour of what they're doing out of Convention Center. And it was just working on a clockwork. They had a great system set up, a ton of folks coming through while we were out there. But of course, after that. that, they couldn't make any further appointments because they cannot get a number of the, uh, of the vaccine they needed to continue with appointments.
Where are the applications for them?
At the Landis County Convention Center on the baby floor, that's where they did their drive-through. And they're still doing it, like, uh, Dr. Gro said last week, at the public apartment itself. But they decided that way people can just drive up, stay in the car, they don't get out. As a matter of fact, there's signs everywhere saying, please remain in your vehicle, we can pull up, get you some paper, work with us, and go get your shot. They have a s, place for you at the end of the line, where you wait your fifteen, twenty minutes to make sure everything's okay, and you go on your way. So very impressive of what they've got set up. It's just, they cannot get a, uh, you know, a solid, concrete count of the number of vaccines they will get to continue on with the appointments. And they will, but they, 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 just now they can't. Yes?
I understand that Johnson &amp; Johnson is going to release next month.
Right.
A vaccine, uh, single, single injection, that doesn't have to be kept at this low refrigerated temperature. Do you know if our health department, I guess I should ask Dr. Gro, but, you know, if we might be in line to receive some of those?
Yeah, Dr. Gro mentioned that, Councilman Gordon, last week when he was here, that they have, that they're looking at that. Now, as far as anything definite, I certainly would wanna speak for the health department on it, but I know they are aware of that, and he, it did allude to that.
Okay, thank you.
Also, this is my, uh.
Yes, ma'am.
Here, I, virtual class, Tuesday, they were, they announced that we don't, in the state of Georgia, do not start going out, get these vaccines, that when products do come in, we're gonna lose it because, uh, they're gonna send to other states that can use it, because our people are really not coming out enough to receive the vaccines. Have you, did you get that?
That's absolutely correct. And, 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 and that's such a great point, Councilwoman Toole, because we've got folks come out on drugs in our community, but the state of Georgia doesn't. So what the state of Georgia's getting is limited, which means we're gonna get a limited supply. So that's exactly what's happening. We want it here, but they're shipping to those states that are showing up, that are used in the state of Georgia's right now. So we do have to change that, absolutely.
And, and, and Council, and if I could add, anybody that's, that's viewing this, and the Council to, uh, disseminate this information to the community as well. If you so desperately want that shot, you would have scrambled to five different locations to make appointments, please cancel the other four appointments when you do get one. That is very important, because now you're just, you're holding a spot, that somebody else could have. And the only option they have is they schedule a hundred and ten or no shows, they actually have a waiting list for people that can scramble there within a thirty minute period of time who will take up that vaccine, because you cannot reprove that it goes for days, and it counts against us. So, script point.
Sure. And then, then lastly, I just wanted to, uh, update you on our friend Ernest Wright. And, uh, right now, there, there's preliminary tentative, it's not everything set in stone. Uh, there's a service at nine AM at Scott &amp; Roberts, but they're still not absolutely a hundred percent sure of that. That's what their, uh, uh, the plan is right now. But there, there, again, as you can imagine, they're in shock. Good news is that, uh, Ms. Wright is out of ICU, and, uh, so that, that's very good news. So just continue to keep their family in your prayers. And, uh, and, and, as I've said in my email, we've been in constant contact, myself, Richard, and Catherine, with the family, making sure we're doing whatever we need to do to, to help them out. So, that's the legacy of information we have on that stroke. Are, to the head, any other questions?
I, I, yeah. But is, we need to retain and encourage our community to, willing events, you know, any, you know, getting out of, but that's one of the main things that we got, uh, it up, try to get, eat this thing out, while Black was a king, and, and encourage our community to, to wear masks, and, and, you know, I wear my mask for your protection, I need to wear your mask for mine.
That's right, that's right. We're, we're continuing our, on our pages, our social media pages, pushing that out. You know, we got you guys again with your messages out there. We're pushing each of you out there with your message, and we continue, absolutely. Because, you know, sometimes you just gotta keep things in the front of people's thoughts and minds, because it, it does get an easy habit not to do.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll quickly open, Council comments with the comments, uh, complimenting both the county government and their public works, our public works, and, and our engineering as well, as we glance over to our park and what will be their future as well. Uh, that is, uh, the citizens see that, people. That's, uh, two, the projects working very well at the same time, two very exciting projects running downtown. Counsel, I'll open up to you.
Our pocket park and Old Rock. Our pocket park and the Old Rock are going at the same time right now.
I got one.
Counsel.
January twenty-seven, Councilwoman Vick, if I go get my vaccine, they're gonna, they're gonna take my picture, they're gonna livestream, they'll come, uh, but it's gonna, I'm, I'm doing it for my citizens to see that I'm the first one taken, in order to present something, you gotta show it to a part of it. So I'll be taking my first vaccine, January twenty-seven, at nine AM, representing District One slash City of. Uh, it's gonna be inside, like, you know.
In the R.
So, um, and they excited, I'll be, uh.
You know, any other comments?
Can I give some of this shot? We have, man, I, I, I was, uh, we, we, uh.
Counsel, I'll let me take a motion.
Sure.
I'll favor.